Sarah.
Here.
John.
Here.
Stephanie.
Here.
Nate.
Here.
Travis.
Here.
A bunch of allegiance.
A bunch of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you need a motion for the dissent agenda? So I'm going to move a motion of a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public input, this is the time and place for discussion items not already on the agenda with a time limit of two minutes each. Grayton, you got it in a sec? Proclamation for National Historic Preservation Month. Proclamation, whereas historical preservation is effective tool or manager rule for sustainable development. It's revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livelihood and whereas historical preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages and all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, as a people. And now therefore I, Mayor of Lisbon, Mayor of City of Lisbon, proclaim May 2021 as National Preservation Month, call upon the people of Lisbon to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Alright, discussion and possible action in reference library using Lincoln Square Park for storytime this summer.
You'll see the email there from Amy down at the library, she spoke to Grayton. Basically they'd like to use it on Thursdays at ten eight, ten thirty AM to do storytime each Thursday during the summer. I just thought I'd put it on there just to see if anybody had any issues with that.
I think that's a great idea.
Plan on not, as you can see in here, they're not going to do anything inside as far as programs as of yet. So this will be something to take the kids together for.
You want a motion for approval?
Sure, that's not needed.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah, Stephanie.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Discussion of possible action to approve repairs to a concession stand at Bunning Field.
You'll see in the emails as well that seventy-one eighty-three was the initial bid for the concession stand. However, that did not include re-roofing the existing portion, which they cannot find a light shingle. So that's twenty-nine hundred extra plus the eighteen hundred for cement work to pour a new pad in front. Both should be covered by insurance, so the new total would be eleven thousand eight-eight-three.
So everything's covered by insurance or?
Yes.
Okay.
And you saw the email, did it come through from insurance? Both pads together are going to be right around thirty-four hundred dollars.
Did they price out steel roof?
Uh, did not. You never have to do anything with it. What's the original bid, I thought included the entire roof, but after we, Travis and I talked to Curtis, it did not. And he was just going to kind of match them up well.
The old roof line was not in line with the old roof.
This one.
It was like orange tired.
Yeah, this one's going to be connected and it's going to be all straight out.
But it will always stay.
It's all going to be one solid, solid structure, so.
You agree with me?
And this also includes tying in the parent, the last stud over like where you would stand to purchase an item. If you look up, it's bowed out, so they're going to tie all this together to make sure that that all still in line and all that.
You said insurance is going to cover all this?
Yes.
So they're, they're going to re-roof basically the whole thing then?
Correct.
But yeah, what about Tim?
I mean, just have him look at it, I mean, we can approve this and then, you know.
Yeah, he hasn't purchased it yet.
I mean, Tim will never do it till he has.
Exactly.
You know, I mean, I mean, do we approve it and say, you know, give the price of ten and if it's, you know, reasonable, yeah, Brandon just okay it?
Brandon can approve anything up to five thousand, so I'll make a motion to approve this as it sits. And then if the ten comes back within your approval, you can go ahead and adjust accordingly up to your five thousand dollars. I second.
I second.
Eleven eight-eight-three.
Well, plus whatever your five.
I have a motion of a second, Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Steph.
Aye.
Alright, public hearing for update to Lisbon flood plan ordinance per FEMA request.
So this all started with a certified letter from FEMA advising that.
I need a motion to go into public hearing first, please.
Sorry, motion to go into public hearing?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you have a motion to go into public hearing now? Seven oh five.
Not go for it.
Alright, so this all started with a FEMA certified letter just explaining that the flood plain management for the county has changed. It's through the DNR, so I sent off this to Jason Khan, the Iowa DNR. He took our existing flood plain management, made the corrections that was needed, sent it back to me. I then had Travis look at it and I spoke to Connie. There was a couple of things that we had that wasn't required in the new plan. So then I sent that on to Dave at B and K and then he made his corrections and then sent it back to Jason for final approval. And here it is. There's not a lot to change, it's just kind of the rules or what they follow.
Do we have any questions for him?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
A motion to a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First reading of ordinance, chapter one sixty-two flood plain management, also suspension roles and placing ordinance on third and final reading.
Motion to approve the first reading.
I have a motion to the first or a second?
Second.
Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Steph.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to suspend place on third and final reading?
Is there any urgency that would require this for to get it on the books sooner?
No, he, I don't remember the date, it was in July, I want to say it was the sixteenth, I had to ring a bell to do it. But he knew that, he knew that it was, he wanted the public hearing date and was fine with everything, so.
I am actually going to make a motion to suspend the hearings and go to the third and final, only for the simple fact that this is not going to change. There, nothing's going, nobody's going to come in here and change their mind about this, and it's just one less thing that we have to worry about getting on every agenda.
Have a motion of a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Have a motion of a second. Uh, motion for the reading of one sixty-two flood plain.
Motion to approve the third and final reading.
Have a motion to a second?
Second.
Travis.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Steph.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Resolution eighteen twenty-one to approve higher part-time positions for the library.
Again, you'll see the email from Amy, this is going to be just for staff to cover her when she's gone.
A motion?
I motion.
A second?
Second.
Motion second, resolution, Travis.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Nate.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Steph.
Aye.
So public hearing reference changes to chapter ninety-two water rates.
So this is going to be, a public hearing will be set for the twenty-fourth, if you guys want to do that. It's for the water rates, I spoke to Maggie, this is a reference to the increases required for the bonds. I'm still working with her, she's supposed to be giving me a new printout with what the new increases should be, but it shouldn't be more than three percent.
Motion to approve the public hearing for the twenty-fourth.
Have a motion of a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So public hearing references changes to ordinance twenty, or ninety-nine sewer service charge, same thing?
Yep.
Well, I make the public hearing for the twenty-fourth.
Have a motion to a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so public hearings, hearing, reference adding ordinance to make Mount Vernon, or Lisbon, Mount Vernon, Hamlets, Cracker City employee.
So this goes back to the goals for the, that's the goal setting, budget meetings when Jake presented to you with the sheet that I attached in the packet. We are meeting with personnel tomorrow to discuss this, but I met with Jake, Chris and Osbys from the city ministerial for Mount Vernon and myself, and we went through and I think we have a plan that would work for both communities, at least for the time being. And so hopefully encourage the director to stay with the service as a city employee. If you have any questions now or if you want to handle that later, like, he kind of went into depth, this was his presentation he gave, if you remember during the budget talks.
And are you wanting this for the twenty-fourth as well?
Uh, yes, please.
Motion to approve the public hearing to be set for the twenty-fourth.
Have a motion to a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
What's your comments?
I don't, other than Doug couldn't make it tonight, you'll see the monthly police report that's in the packet.
I do just want to acknowledge the correspondence that we got from Mac and Mills, and I know Brandon already responded, and I just want to make sure that that stays on our mind for everybody. So that we can keep them in the loop.
I, just for that recognition, just sent out an email earlier, probably an hour ago.
I saw it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Did that go to them?
No, I just sent it to, to you guys, so you saw them.
Yeah.
Preservation piece. Anything else? No, nothing for us.
City engineer reporting to Dave.
I've heard from.
Do we, do we know when we're going to get the bid for Highway thirty?
We have a, well, or the, the public hearing is the twenty-fourth, and the bid letting is the twenty-eighth. Yeah, it should be only let it and then the whole.
So we're going to open up the, we got a reading on, it's like a week, isn't it?
Is this the twentieth?
Yeah. It's the twentieth opening. Sorry, the bid letting, the due date's the twentieth, we'll have a public hearing as well.
Right. Yes.
That's correct. Joe. Yeah, so Brandon, myself and Dave will open them here and then go to you guys. He has the public hearing set with? Yep. I was scheduled that last night.
That's all I have, Nate. Public work director report.
Alright, I'm on the, here, on the twenty-fourth, you guys got the email that Doug Shannon sent out about UTV, ATV ordinances and stuff. I read that and with talking to Doug, the only concern I have is they put the temperature in there for being thirty-two, where we do have people using UTVs to plow. My only, my only concern with that is if we're going to allow the UTVs to do that, and they have to be licensed, I wish we could, I hope we can make four-wheelers be the same way, so we can prove that we know that they're having insurance, and then we can also give them a copy of our ordinance to explain like what they can and can't do with the snow. Because most of our problems with the, the UTV and ATVs when they are plowing is they're creating more mess for us and.
I, I agree with them.
So, so, I mean, so do you want us to license the four-wheelers then?
Only for snow, I mean, they're out, we're not stopping them now, so either we stop them completely.
Yeah.
Or if we're going to allow them, we make them follow the same rules that we're asking the UTV and golf carts to follow.
License them?
License them for snow only, not saying that they can run them up and down the streets every time, just for their snow only. Cause it's, I mean.
Get made a disaster over in our area because they were just putting all their snow, a four-wheeler was putting all their snow on the other side of the street instead of, and it made a disaster for the city crews.
And we can't, I mean, these are heavy trucks, so we can't really stop on the dime, and most of, mostly are flying through intersections and flying around, so. I guess we're going to, we either.
Do you think that during that time, most of them are legitimately out plowing, or do you think that they're legitimately out?
I think they're, I think they're, I think they're plowing, because you see plows in front of them. And so, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to think that they're legitimately out and they're just in a hurry.
If they're doing their own driveways, they need insurance and.
No, not their own, I'm talking about the ones that are driving from point A to point B, so.
And plowing point B?
Yes.
Like for hire?
Like a lot of them are for hire.
Okay.
So if I'm going to bring my four-wheeler to plow your driveway, I should.
They're electric?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just my, I mean, you guys can do what you want, that would just be my ask, because the many reasons, it's not like we want a ten dollar license out of it. I want to just prove, have proof of insurance in case something does happen for us and to give them our ordinance on how to, what they can and can't do for snow removal.
I will say that I get torn on that, and I, I get torn on it because I see a lot of these little kids who, well, not little, but young kids, you know, who are like plowing somebody's driveway for ten bucks or whatever on their thing, and I think that that's great because I love seeing the kids out, you know, being productive. But during that one snow, I saw a ton of them out plowing all over the place, and they didn't care where they put it. And so that is kind of what makes it sort of a necessity, it just sucks because they ruin, you know, kind of.
So.
I, I'm, I'm going to play devil's advocate, advocate in this, so if we're going to say what the, what we're going to do about the guy that has snow blowers on their tractors. I'm, I'm going to put the devil that, because I am a hundred percent with you on.
The tractor's not going thirty-five miles an hour down the road.
On their legal.
Yeah. You can run a tractor up and down the road if you can, but four-wheeler.
One, one thing with this is we have a meeting Friday with both towns and the attorneys, the city administration and attorneys, Zoom call, about the ordinance, just to make sure all meshes together. So I'm not even sure that we can even, since they're not even a licensed vehicle, if we can, if we can do this or you can't even include it in your UTV, so that's one thing I'm going to.
But golf carts don't necessarily have to be licensed either, right?
No, there's code in the Iowa code about golf carts, and these penalties can, can have, you know, rules or regulations to a golf cart, but I don't know if there is a form for this.
Well, I thought our ordinance said that we had to be licensed, those golf carts had to be licensed.
No, that's what I'm saying, they do, but there's state code that supports that, I'm not sure that state code supports a city allowing four-wheelers to, to run down or something.
Yeah, it specifically doesn't, I don't believe it does, so I don't know, I mean, can.
Total different, kind of, when you're talking about this ordinance, the UTVs, are we going to charge them a fee even if they're registered with State Iowa and have their own State Iowa DOT sticker?
Well, they wouldn't be a UTV, that would be a street legal vehicle, that would.
But they're, they're registered, but they are, if they're registered with the State of Iowa to run anywhere, several.
That's not a UTV that we would register.
So they could drive them to town either.
Well, they could go anywhere because they're a licensed vehicle, so at that point, it's a motor vehicle on a, on a.
Cause there's not going to be anything like that, that, it, what he's talking about is going to have an official license plate issued by whatever county.
Like a license plate with a little green sticker.
So you guys are talking about two different things, I want to make sure.
It's a DNR sticker, when you, the UTVs.
Oh, the DNR, no, yes, they would have to, because those, those are only, you have to get county permission, and the county permits, and there's a lot of talk, people online about this. The county permits are only valid and specifically says in, on secondary roads in unincorporated areas. So they do not allow, their sticker does not go into Lisbon.
So if somebody at Sutler has that sticker, they're still going to need a license to come into Lisbon.
Correct. And I do know that the, the big stress with all this is going to be education, definitely not first and all that, so.
I mean, I don't think it's really a huge change for Lisbon residents, they should be used to this.
Really, the only change I think they're going to require is either a rearview mirror or a side mirror, which I think is important. Uh, the seating capacity and the ability to go in and out.
You know what I'd like to see is something to stop somebody from driving down the street in one of those things with an infant sitting on their lap.
That's, that's.
That's the seating part, yeah, that's the seating part, I didn't read it, so I didn't.
So all people, they have a mask on the six on a golf cart and they'll have to be seated, not on a lap.
Cause that is scary, and I've seen that happen a lot.
So if they're registered with the State of Iowa, they don't need a ticket for here, a sticker for Lisbon.
If they're registered for the State of Iowa, they're going to have a DOT license plate.
Like you have on your car.
You can get the trail passes that they're getting all over the place, those, those DNR, those are trail passes for the county that you have, still have to get to City of Lisbon because it's not a license, anything that's not a plated vehicle will need to come here and get a license.
Travis, you got anything else?
Yeah, wasn't expecting that to come up.
Really?
True. We did, sod was kind of a crapshoot on getting it, and we wanted to have the cemetery done and at least dressed up before the holiday, and that's what we should try it for. So we did, we did seed and use matting out there instead of sod this year, but it freezes every other day. I think it was a smart investment for right now, so hopefully that's, grass is going to be coming up for the end of the month for that holiday there. Stumps, just so you guys know, Brandon and I have a plan to get these stumps started, to get the ground on, we just are waiting till mid-June-ish to get started on them for budget purposes, and then.
And we're, we're going to do them, right?
Yes. I did try to get Jake enrolled in one of his water classes, and the DNR regulations have switched through COVID. So now instead of, like, when I took the class, it was one class for water, and it was four hundred bucks and you were done. Now they want one for water treatment, one for water distribution, so we're trying to get that figured out on why, virtually the same class, why we have to pay twice to get. So we're working on him getting his classes, so I just wanted to give you the update on that.
It's called makeup line.
Yeah. Because it can, so. That's it.
Do you have anything for Travis? RC Director report.
I have my coaches meeting for intro T-ball coach pitch on Wednesday, and we will begin season next week, Monday.
How many kids do you have registered?
I've got forty-four AK kindergarten kids, and I've got forty-four first and second grade kids, and then we had some, we had about five or six third through sixth kids that are playing in Mount Vernon this year. We never get enough kids for those age groups because we have so many league teams, so a little big thanks to Mount Vernon because Mac takes all of those kids and puts them on Mount Vernon Lisbon team, so. So we had, we had a rough, and I still have a couple more I got to put in, but we're going to have right over a hundred kids.
Good. Got enough coaches?
I do, I'm getting there, I need two, but I'll, I'll get them by the end of the week.
Doug's reports in there, fire chute report.
The only thing I have with that is, assuming everything stays as it is, we will be having our pancake breakfast on Labor Day, so, something to look forward to, I guess.
City manager report.
Uh, just to tie in with Grayton, I want to say thank you to Seeds of Faith Church, they allow us to have soccer season out there, and they're allowing us to have T-ball out there and their coach pitch, so that takes a lot of stress off Grayton and opens up some more diamond space for the team, so thank you to Seeds of Faith. Uh, the grass, the outfield, the baseball field's finally starting to grow, and at least from the road, looks really good. So we were able to rope that off through all soccer, and I think that really helps, so. Tomorrow or Wednesday, Musco is going to be here to install the temporary lights on the baseball diamond. Last week, Grayton and I met very electric over at the park, spoke to Bob Bunning, the softball coach. Uh, he really wanted that concession stand done because the roof over the concession area protects, you know, people in line from foul balls and then the fence area to protect the vehicles, so what we did is had Gray come out, we adjusted the lights on Diamond Four and adjusted some of the lights on Bunning Field, although there's still a few that are taken out by the storm and unreparable. We were able to move some to eliminate getting a temporary light or the need of a temporary light on Bunning Field. So I don't know how long the fix is going to last because the wind actually spun the lights completely around and twisted the brackets, so that all needs redone, but he was able to get them back around and try to tighten it down, so. One, it should improve the safety of vehicles and the people, and also should save a little money by not needing the temporary light, so. And then we'll have to figure out here after summer, well, probably before that, but the whole process on what we want to do for the permanent lighting and where we want to go with that, so. That'll be coming up in upcoming meetings. I believe the Sun newspaper is doing the garage sale day for Lisbon on June nineteenth.
That is correct.
And that we will be doing the bulky item drop-off or amnesty day, some people call it, on June twenty-sixth, seven to eleven.
Are we going to, are we going to be at different locations?
Yes.
The battery stuff down here, we usually do.
The TV, the spec period.
So I know people that are calling and asking about it, so I want to make sure that got put out. Uh, we had the first town hall meeting for the comprehensive plan, uh, there was, through Zoom, we had a morning meeting and an afternoon or evening. Uh, the morning meeting was pretty well attended, uh, the evening meeting was not, but that was the last night of soccer, and it was about the nicest day for that whole week, so. One thing is, I expressed is there's some surveys that you can go on the website, our city website, pick up a survey of how to, basically it's kind of put your opinion, they have a bunch of questions on there on how you want to see Lisbon grow and what you see, perceive for the future, what you'd like to see, so it's pretty important to get your opinion in there. So the more, the more we have, the better. And then also for the water project, uh, we sent out an income survey, and this is for a grant. And we really need to have the publicly, we received several of those back, but please get those turned in. Uh, the more we have, the better our chances are of getting a grant to, to assist with that water project, which will help with lowering, keeping rates low and so forth.
Did that go to all citizens?
Nope, that was randomly picked in the area where we're doing the project. They, they actually did send them to us, and then we, we had a few get kicked back that were vacant, they weren't good addresses, so then they gave us a few more to toss out.
So what, the lower the income, the more potential we have for a grant?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's completely anonymous.
Yes, you literally don't put your address on it, you don't put anything, we just put an envelope, you can drop it in the water box or you turn it in and they're like.
Why not hit everybody?
That's just how they do it.
They would.
Uh, EC guy.
We're working with the EC guy.
We're training the grant.
We're doing the big watering project.
So they randomly sampled, everybody basically was mainly from Martin Street North, essentially. And they, they ransacked off a few other.
And we just done this a few years ago too, so probably why they randomly, it was just to make sure that the median income in the area is still a lot the same, so.
So if you haven't filled that out, please do, it's very important to us to.
Unless you make a lot of money, then don't. Just kidding.
That's about it, just been pretty busy, I don't know if you guys have any questions or comments or.
Anything, Travis? I don't. City clerk board included in the package, or packet, very, very nice, but thank Christine, I'd like you to read it. But I think.
Oh, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, you know, lots of people, know what, how people, I mean, you got it with you, you can read now.
Yeah.
Yeah, just go ahead and read it.
Um, April twenty-first to twenty-third, I attended the Island, um, Island municipal finance officers association, I am F O A. Uh, in Des Moines, lots of great information was shared, many updates concerning payroll, American Rescue Fund, road use funds, and other state funds. On April thirtieth, Martian and myself worked with Kelly. On April thirtieth, Marsha and myself worked with Kelly Robertson in the third grade class to clean up downtown in Lincoln Square. For the annual spring cleanup day, forty-five students helped and we had a lot of great feedback from students, teachers and community members. Photos were shared on Facebook, school site have been sent to the newspaper. After the cleanup day, Marsha took it upon herself to go and finish the cleanup at Lincoln Square on the weekend. Uh, she never lets anything stop that way. Outstanding debt accounts is down to five accounts totaling seven hundred and six dollars and eighty-three cents, which is the lowest in over five years now. Surveys have been sent out to the community development block grant under Triklin Inn. Our Facebook page is very active thanks to Marsha and we received a lot of nice feedback for those efforts. The survey link for the comprehensive plan is on there as well and due May third, May twenty-first. The wonderful decorations here at City Hall are all thanks to Marsha's efforts. And Marsha is currently working on the newsletter. If anybody has anything they want to include, the months of June, July and August. Know anything going on then, let her know sooner than later to get that in there. Thanks.
Anything for Christine? Council Mayor report. Travis?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Um, Renee, I have nothing today. Thank you. Sarah?
Well, I think it's been a while since we thanked all of our employees. So I know this past year has been a crazy one and I think we're starting to turn around. So I just want to thank all the city employees for everything, all the obstacles they had to go through, through the whole pandemic and everything else. So thank you very much, much appreciated. It's like that.
John?
Well, that was on my list too.
Great ones, people like Johnny.
He loved you here. He loved you here, John.
And City Hall does look great. That's all I.
And the Facebook page is very, very nice. There's a lot of interesting stuff on there. It's very, kind of, I mean.
All right, I, first of all, when are, when are we slated to get our chipper?
Supposed to be the first week of June.
Yeah. I just wanted to say thanks to the third grade class for the cleanup downtown and stuff. I mean, it's pretty funny. They're pretty fun watching those kids. They bust up their bus. Those are terrible watching. And I also had someone say, thank the guys. I mean, we're back to finding the full crew again. They bust up their bus when they were little people, were little people and. Hopefully they can get a little bit of your knowledge now then. All right. New business, possible closed session pursuant to Iowa Code twenty-one, twenty-five J to discuss possible purchase of real estate property. Have a motion to go into the closed session.
Second?
Have a motion to second. Travis?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Nate?
Aye.